Yeah, good group. Oh yeah, they'll take care of it.
Hey, I'd like to welcome everybody out tonight. We're short a few. I'd like to thank everybody for being here. I'd like to welcome our new commissioner, Melinda Lee. Welcome.
Thank you.
Tonight, we'll have some opening remarks by Brady. Following Brady's opening remark, he'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I'm gonna offer my opening remarks tonight in the form of a prayer. Yeah, thank you. Our heavenly Father, we thank for our many blessings. We're thankful this evening for the opportunity that we have together as the Planning and Zoning Commission. We're thankful for those in attendance. Thankful for this land in which we live, for the freedoms that afford us, and for the opportunities that it provides us. We ask thee, heavenly Father, that the things that we discuss tonight, the decisions that we make, that they will be in ordinance with the laws of the county, in conjunction with the ordinances and laws of the county. And we thank thee for our leaders, and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen. At this time, if you would, please stand to join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Brady. I wasn't at the last meeting, but as I've looked over the minutes, those of you that were here, did you see any additions or corrections to the minutes that we need to talk about?
I did not. The only problem I saw was the extension of time. That was Lane's fault.
You're right.
Which time?
I would move, Mr. Chairman, that we accept the minutes.
I'd accept that motion.
Second.
That seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Even though I wasn't here?
Yeah, you're.
Aye. Oh, for the confirmed, not opposed.
Motion passes, thank you. Well, we've got a few consent items on the agenda for tonight. We'll start out with the Baldwin subdivision.
Well, I did have just one comment on the Baldwin. Cause consent items, we don't necessarily need to discuss.
Okay.
I just got a revised report in front of you for Baldwin subdivision. Firstly, I have the road addressed on it, so I did get that.
That threw me off.
And then, the Public Works Department and Fire District both determined that condition number four could be deleted. So that's just been moved. The reference from the staff report and then the full condition has been moved regarding the road improvements to meet fire.
Four would be totally removed.
Correct. But other than that, there's no changes on the other consent item.
And maybe if I could, Mr. Chair, just to talk about, for the audience's sake, the consent agenda. Those are all items that have been deemed to meet the requirements of the code. However, those can be pulled from the consent agenda and added to the regular agenda if there is a need to discuss them. If the commission feels there's a need to discuss each one individually, or if there's a member of the community that has some specific, maybe it's an owner that wants to discuss it, or the proponent. However, if there are not, the consent agenda can be approved as a whole.
Mr. Chairman, I have one question.
Yeah.
In regards to consent item number three.
The Fox Hollow?
Yeah. And I don't know if we should discuss this. Well, I'd kinda like to know now, before we make a decision or what have you on it. But as I, as I look through this, obviously, this is to expand lot sizes from where they currently are. There was one or two things done previously that were recorded without going through the zoning office, I guess I would say, which can be done. But it just raises a red flag if or when you want to make some additional changes such as this. My question or concern is, do we anticipate this is an attempt to try and get more lots out of that? Or is it simply in that ag remainder to disperse the property, the property between the property, existing property owners and be done?
That's, that's correct. The second thing you said is correct.
Okay.
They can't gain additional lots there. I'll let Angie speak to that if she has more input there. But it's just in a rearrangement of the lot sizes. They are limited on the number of lots they can have, unless they came back for a rezone.
So the remaining lot will be eight, almost eighteen acres, right? Is that the ag remainder?
I think it's more like eight.
Sorry, I don't recall, I need to look.
Eight.
Yeah, eight point five two.
It has to be a minimum of five acres. I would just add to what Chris said. They are doing a subdivision boundary change on the north side, which would allow the property to the north to gain enough acreage to go through a subdivision. But yeah.
To what again?
Would allow the property to the north to go through a subdivision, to give them enough acreage. But there's no new lots going to be added to this, or could be added to this subdivision.
So it is kinda setting this up, though, that the lot to the north, or the parcel to the north could be divided, or could come, fly to be divided.
They, they might be able to. Right now, they just were adjusting the boundary between the property, this Fox Hollow subdivision and that property. That's the piece you referenced. They made a change without going through proper process. This corrects that.
So this is just aligning that with the current.
Oh, this is Baldwin. Oh, okay. And then, I guess I do have one other question. I, I read through these previously, but I totally missed that they were consent items. On the Darrell's Appliance subdivision, that lot split. Apologize, I'm not a little better prepared. I guess I'll address this to Mr. Chairman. I had a question on that, too, that.
On which one?
This would be on the Darrell Appliance, so it's number four. As I looked at that, I remembered it being, there'd be a remainder of, what was that acreage on that lot that they were leaving? Actually, I think online it gives us a little more detail. Okay, it would put us down to a six acre parcel on the north. So basically what they're, the way that originally existed, was there two parcels there, the Darrell's parcel, or where the appliance store sits, and then the entire, it would have been twenty, twenty-nine acres?
Yeah, so I pulled up your GIS map. You can see how the, this is the subdivision in the red hash, it's Darrell's Appliance itself, and then there was the second, larger piece. They're just coming back to create a third lot here.
Okay, but this came before us, like, within the last three years?
It did.
And can you refresh our memory on what was trying to be accomplished at that time? Or was it just the split from one parcel to two at that time?
I don't remember if you were part of that one, Angie.
Oh, the original subdivision is 2001.
There was a request that came through, probably within the last two or three years.
Yes.
That was coming from Mr. Ricks, who owns the property on the north end, Lot One.
Okay.
And they were hoping to gain some additional development potential out of their parcel.
Their, just their parcel.
However, most of the development potential came from Mr. Reese's property. And there was not an agreement between Mr. Ricks and Mr. Reese to allow that to occur. So that failed. And now Mr. Reese is coming back to divide that property to the south where the development potential exists. And he has the ability to add an additional lot.
In reality, he has two lots there, just because of the acreage that he has. Whether he makes this six acres or ten acres. He's, he's got that because of the A-ten.
Correct.
Okay. That's just what I wanted to confirm, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments on the consent item?
I do not.
Did you have any questions?
Oh, I have a lot of questions, but probably nothing that's gonna stop it. Minor generic. I know.
I can't see question marks from here, though.
I know.
So with that, we don't have any other questions or discussion. Take a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the consent items, one through five.
I'd accept that.
Is that to approve?
With the, to approve the consent items, one through five, with their accompanying conditions.
I would second that.
I'd accept that, and accept the second. All in favor of the, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
So if you're new to the process, if it's been approved here, then there's just a set of conditions that would need to be met for each subdivision. So if you have a question specific to those applications, then just reach out to staff. We can help you with any of those questions as you move forward there. There'll be a follow-up letter also sent out if you're an applicant.
Thanks. Moving on to the West Edge rezone. Do we have a report on that, staff?
Yes, so this is a rezone request to, rezone? Right as the word comes in. Approximately forty-five acres from the agricultural A-ten zone to the industrial zone. This would allow the parcel to establish uses permitted in the industrial zone. But a rezone request is general in nature and not tied to any proposed use. Any impacts related to the permitted and conditional use allowed within the industrial zone would be addressed as part of a conditional use permit process. Staff has identified some general information as pertains to subject property to assist the planning commission, and we're adding in a decision. The information is reflected in the findings of facts that are attached to maps. Staff had recommended, or is recommending, continuance up to ninety days because there was issues with the property, and some questions about the actual acreage, and if there were roads that needed to be dedicated or platted on the property. Just before this meeting, we received a survey, but we have not had a chance to review it.
Here's a copy of that updated.
A copy of the document two, which would show the area in which they want to. Instead of identifying the location of the platter.
There was a concern there because there was some, I don't know, lack of clarity in where those lines are supposed to be. So the survey is, is there to help clarify where that is proposed.
And additionally, the rezone was not going to include the north part of Parcel Two. And so this survey also shows where that boundary would be adjusted. Show you the map here. So the rezone request was for Parcel O-four-zero-seven-five-two and three. But in actuality, there will be adjusting the boundary so that this property, this development here, would go into the northern property. So again, this survey that was just brought, given to us today, also indicates that adjusted boundary line.
Angie, can you point that out one more time? I'm sorry, I was watching the map.
Yeah, so.
Just where it's gonna be adjusted.
Yeah, so the line will be about right here instead.
So is that saying that that's where the current?
So the barns.
No, the current one is where it's at, but it would move back to that one?
Correct, yeah.
So the barns are above the dark line.
Legal description and rezones are tied to specific legal descriptions.
So just south of twenty-two hundred is where that boundary begins?
Yeah, cause that road is now, now split.
The staff report still has the recommendation continuance as of these issues. And again, we have not had a chance to look fully at the survey that was provided. But I will still go through the rest of the staff report here for the public hearing. So the subject properties are legal, they're in the same size and configuration since August eighth, two thousand and six. I described the issues that our county GIS department found with regards to the legal description and the lot and block-based plating that needed to be clarified to show those right-of-way gaps. In the industrial zone, it does allow for a variety of uses that were, that are not permitted in the current agricultural zone, including general manufacturing, storage and warehousing, crematoriums and animal shelters. The sensitive areas map does show that there is potentially wetlands on the property. That layer here, something to do with that. It's also attached to your staff report.
Hey, just while you're pulling that up, we were having some discussion on that earlier. So, some of them wetlands are true wetlands, but what happens if we're at the end of the ditch, say? And they just choose, instead of choosing to funnel the water to the next parcel, they just let it run, and then over time, cattails grow. How, who and when determines those, those wet, those wetlands areas?
Army Corps of Engineers. The applicant does have experience with working with the Army Corps to do a wetland delineation and determine what are actual wetlands and what are not in order to develop that. I'm sure you could speak more to that.
Well, I, I just was curious on our end, not even respective to this piece, but just in general. So, like, how often are those benchmarked? Are they every ten years? How often do we, are the wetlands assessed?
What, what you're seeing right now is based on some NWS Fish and Wildlife type data that's from probably the seventies, eighties, I think it's seventies, and it's not accurate.
They're usually dated, aren't they, on that?
Yep. And so what we've, and they're in the process right now. They, they started last year to discuss it, trying to get funding for it, but they need to update all this wetland data. So we use this as an indicator, almost like a red flag, that we need to look into this, and maybe there needs to be more analysis or assessment done. We don't rely on it strictly as it stands because it's found to be largely inaccurate. Sometimes it shows there's wetlands and there's not. Sometimes it shows there's no wetlands and there are. So it's kind of a varied approach there. There are occasions it's accurate, but that hasn't been the typical case. In the situation you described, that's something that a, I don't know, a professional would go out and look at and make a determination. But so far as actual benchmarking, checking that data, doesn't occur on a regular basis.
Okay.
How does that affect the industrial zone with the wetlands? It's, I mean, it's, that's what we're looking at today, right?
You see the, the piece that they're, they've got right now with all the cold storage, all the piles of gravel and whatnot on there, rock. So they went through a delineation when they did their conditional use permit in the past, and they had to have someone go in, they delineate where those wetlands might be. And in fact, if you drive by it right now, you'll see on that very eastern edge against the road that there's a spot that's fenced. That's wetland. So they determined that was wetland. There might be other spots, but Justin can speak to that. The applicant can speak to that. I just can't see him from the road. I haven't been into the site, so I couldn't tell you. So there'll, there'll have to be some work, and that's probably identified here. I don't recall, Angie, if that's.
Well, that would be done at the CUP.
Oh, you're right, this is a rezone, my apologies. Typically, that's a condition that's attached to conditional use permit. We don't attach conditions to rezones, that's not wise or legal.
So just adjacent uses to the subject property are primarily agricultural and industrial. On your attachment A is the rezone map that shows uses within a half mile, quarter mile of the property. There are no homes with parcels, or no parcels with homes, I should say, within a half a mile of the subject properties. Logan City, they have a boundary within about a quarter mile of the property to the north, south and east. There are three parcels, zoned industrial to the east of the rezone request, also just across Tenth West. And all three were rezoned along with the subject, well, actually, along with the edge excavation site here. So the edge excavation site and the two properties over here are currently zoned industrial. Sorry, let me turn on that overlay.
So the edge excavation is on the west side of that, right? Is it zoned, it's zoned industrial right now?
Yeah.
Already, right?
See from the county.
There you go.
Zoning here. So the current edge excavation, one lot immediately on the other side of the road, and then one to the north. So we're all part of the same rezone in two thousand and eleven. Currently, just the edge excavation has a CUP for an industrial-type facility. These don't currently have any approved CUPs on them. It is located within the Logan City future annexation area. Attachment C is, oh, sorry, typo. Is their annexation policy plan boundary. And appears to show the subject properties are split between urban service areas and resource conservation areas. But yeah, it's difficult to tell from that map, but it could be either one. So, and the current county law use code does not specify appropriate locations for industrial zone. It does contain general guidelines for its implementation. Identifies the purpose of the industrial zone as to provide locations where manufacturing, processing, warehousing and fabrication of goods and materials can be carried on with minimal conflict or deleterious effect upon the surrounding properties. And the purpose of this zone is also to promote the economic well-being of citizens abroad in the tax base. Looking at some of the access points that would go to this property, the road manual has a classification for a major local road, which is twenty-two hundred north. It's considered a major local road. So any future development back here would likely require some improvements or extension of that road into the site. But again, that would be reviewed as part of the conditional use permit process. It also has access from one thousand west, which is a UDOT facility. The Fire Department has looked at the site and had no comments regarding the request, but they would, again, reevaluate any potential future development. Public notice was posted, website notices sent within three hundred feet of the property to property owners and Logan City. And at this time, staff has received no comments regarding the request. Again, staff had recommended a continuance. We would probably still recommend that as we need to review the survey that was provided. But that does conclude staff's report.
Thanks, staff. Any questions or comments?
I, no, it's pretty straightforward, but I think it'd be awesome to hear from the applicant.
May I open your public hearing?
Oh, we'll open the public hearing anyway. I just was thinking that, yeah, you're good.
I think we're ready for public.
Okay, we're ready for.
I'll, I'll make that motion if we don't have any others.
I'd accept the motion. Can I get a second?
A second.
Motion passes. We, uh, I'd like to encourage, we'll now open the public hearing. As you're coming up to speak, if you'd please state your name, we'll keep it concise. Do we have anybody here that'd like to come? Go ahead. What was your name?
Kelly Scott Cronk, who's on. Kelly Scott Cronk, who's on from Paradise. And that's been family farm for a long time. But I'm currently using this part, and what she just showed, the new line on there, the corrals that I've made are on the part they don't want. And, but I can't get to them when, when they're there. So I need, so this, I wrote down some things that, how this is gonna affect me. Okay, corral access, I'm not gonna be able to get to the corral. And where I would need to build a corral in my place, which I have a right-of-way through, I can get through there with a tractor and a four-wheel-drive truck, but that's pretty muddy in West Springs. And a four-wheel-drive truck gets stuck where I do it. So I'm not, I'm not gonna have gravel, I'm not gonna have a gravel base for a corral. And let's see, I don't think I could get a semi truck with big bales of hay down there sometimes through the right-of-way that I'm gonna have. And right now, I'm in the process of calving, and I need to have access to those corrals, but I haven't got other corrals built in the other place to use. Okay, and I need to make it for bulls, need to be a bull pan. And my other concern is, I water my place out of springs in a pond that's on the south field that you showed up there. There's springs under that pond. And that's what waters my, that's one of the sources of water for my bottom field. And when you see some of these places get developed like that, I'm trying to talk fast here, you see those springs and wells get rerouted or filled in. And I need that, that's half my water. And so I'm concerned about the water right there, that I'll be able to irrigate what I still have. And let's see, and then I won't have a shed for my tractor and truck and trailers and other truck. So that's basically, my concern is, is gonna make me incapable handling my cattle because I don't build a corral that fast. Takes a few years, thank you.
Hey, just a quick question for you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, obviously, you're concerned about this development.
Yes, it, it just affects what I do.
So it's, it's, it's under, is it your brother?
Yes.
But you guys don't talk then, or?
Well, well, he's more of a business person, I'm more of a cowboy. But it's a, no, we don't talk, I don't know what else is going on. That's why I came to this right here, because I just know he wants to sell what he gets. And, and that, and my concerns are, I'm not gonna be able to keep doing what I do.
Have you had any interaction at all with the?
Edge.
Future buyer?
Edge, I don't have any problem with Edge. I mean, it's not peaceful and quiet like it used to be, but they're good neighbors. They take care of things, they water the gravel and everything. And I don't mind what they do. In fact, they got me out of my trailer. I locked myself in my trailer the other day, and I had to wait the flag for an hour and fifteen minutes before somebody come let me out. But a guy in Wyoming got killed doing that same thing. It scared me when I thought about it, because I had animals in there. Anyway, that, don't have anything to do with it. No, they've, they've been good neighbors. But I was just, I worry about the water. I worry about being able to get a truck down there in the winter to feed. And that's why I'm not in a nursing home when other guys I know that are younger than me are, so.
I just suggest that communication.
Right now, we're just talking about rezone. We're not talking about available, we're not talking about CUP, we're talking about a rezone.
Yeah, but even, even then, I just was suggesting that, just talk to them.
Well, okay, I'm, you mean, talk to Edge. Edge not gonna do a thing, he wants to sell it, but.
Thanks, Kelly. Anybody else?
My name's Justin Robinson. I represent the applicant. I guess first of all, let me answer a couple of your questions and concerns right off the bat, even though it's just for a rezone, not for a CUP. I fully understand your concerns. I'm actually a farm kid from Idaho. And as we talked about all this, your concerns, I've already addressed them with your brother. So apparently, that communication hasn't happened either. If nothing else, I would tell you that you're gonna have better access to everything than what you currently have now. In order for us to be able to do what we're gonna come back on a CUP application, the road that's been built down thus far is all built to Logan City spec, standard. Obviously, we're in the business, we know what's required. And we plan with the CUP application later, that road will be built to the same spec all the way through, all the way down. So access will be, you'll, you'll be just fine. Yeah, you'll have better access. As far as getting your semis down there, you can get them down there in the winter if you want to unload hay. So that won't be an issue.
Gravel and corral?
We can discuss gravel and the corral. So, in act, in actuality, I think I got a better idea for you.
Okay.
But anyway, but I'm a cow guy, I'm a cow guy, too. Like I say, communication would be good. In regards to the water, there are springs in that lower parcel. And with that, we plan on maintaining those springs. From a wetland standpoint, I do have a background. I used to work with BioWest years ago. So I feel like I understand wetlands really, really well. I still work with a couple of wetland consultants on a very regular basis. And with what we've saw on what we did with the property to the east, the intent of this whole thing is for us to be able to clean up the appearance on Tenth West and move our operations west and get them back off the road. Yeah, thank you. And so with that, as was mentioned, we have protected the, the concerns that we have in regards to wetlands. There's a number of springs, if you go, if you understand wetlands and you go in and really study the history of, of the watershed through there, there's a number of springs that were developed back in the eighteen hundreds. One of the issues is trying to find them, find the wells, those artesian wells, and find, find them due to casings being out and stuff like that. So we know what we're doing in regards to that. As well, there's a couple of, of issues with some ditches that come off of the canal, and they just let them come out and flood irrigate in order to flood irrigate that for pasture. We will control water from those areas. And at that point, then you start, you go back and you start evaluating the hydrology and, and such of the acreage. And that's when you can start making those determinations, as far as well and determinations go. But it takes a little bit of time to do it. So, anyway, the, as far as the continuance goes, to ninety days, I'm asking you guys not to grant that. And the reason being is, due to some circumstances that I can't just, I'm not liberty to discuss, I need a decision on this now, so that we can get through to the council. If this was not to be approved, it would be, it would definitely affect how we, we handle our business. A slight frustration from our side is simply the fact that we went down the checklist of the. A slight frustration from our side is simply the fact that we went down the checklist of the application. The survey was not on the application as being required for the rezone. I understand the concerns that are, have been expressed. And so I found out about it last weekend when I was back east, and we've jumped some serious hoops to provide what's required and what's requested. And actually, the, the line between the parcels, 004 and is it 0022? Or 002 down below where 12th West comes through? Can you point that out, Angie? Not on the parcels in question, but you see where 12th West comes through from the south? Headed back to the north right there? We anticipated that 12th would continue on, and at some point, whether it goes all the way out to Airport Road or whether it comes up and just connects with 2200, that 12th West will go in. And we already accounted for that. Now, on these maps, 12th West is not shown. On one of the plat maps, Chris, maybe you can speak to that, where the, it is shown on the old ag stuff?
Yeah, there's some old farm survey stuff when these cities were first platted.
Mm-hmm.
And so the thing that we've been working through with the attorney's office is those rights of way don't go away unless the county vacates them intentionally. And so because those rights of way are still there, we have to account for them with this property that Justin's working on.
Right.
So that the county's aware that they still have some right-of-way that may need to be used as a road, or it may need to be vacated, depending on how the council prefers to act. But we should identify it as part of the rezone, so that when they come through with the conditional use permit and even as part of this rezone process, that it's clearly identified.
Right. Yep, and so, but we anticipated that 12th West would continue basically on the path that it is going north through there. And so, and the survey that we hurried and pulled together in 48 hours reflects that. And then as far as where that north line is, which is just at the south gate of 2200 North where that road comes in, you understand where I'm talking on the map?
I'm looking at it here, too.
Yeah, okay, so right there, that was already given when we first turned in the application, even though it wasn't on a survey, that line and the line on the survey was already turned in with the application. I highlighted everything, I designated it and said, this is the part of the property that Edge is actually looking at buying, but it is conditioned on approval of the rezone and, and then we would come back for a CUP on it in order to move our operation west and get it off the, off 10th West. So.
Yeah, but brief, having briefly looked at that plat, that goes a long way in clarifying what's happening. So that very much is appreciated.
Right, but like I say, everything, everything that's on the survey in that plat is reflected in what we originally turned in. So there's, there's no bait and switch, there's no hidden things right there. The property line is basically off that south side of that gate, and then we would just extend 2200 all the way through and build it per spec. So, are there any questions I can answer beyond what I've?
What a continuance of less time, you've been, I mean, if we, 30 days, just we can have staff review the time used in the last 24 hours, or?
We need to hit the, the upcoming council meetings. That's our concern for the approval. Because you guys make the recommendation to council, correct?
We have a couple of things we can talk through after a public hearing if you'd like.
So, any other?
I, I like what Edge has done in that area. Obviously, you've got, it, it works for you to buy, buy ground and develop it as you're moving commodities around, but.
And really, what it, what it's designated as is a storage yard, you know, and it allows us to be able to serve, you know, from kind of a centralized location.
Yeah, but I think one other thing that you guys need to be complimented on, a lot of people don't realize, is the reclamation that you guys do down there. You take concrete, asphalt that would be filling the landfills.
We do.
You take that, you grind it up, you reuse it, you sort and sift dirt. There's just a lot of good things going on down there that benefits this valley, cost-effective in a lot, a lot of ways.
Appreciate that.
Any other questions for Dustin?
I, I don't have any more.
Okay, thanks, Steph. Any other comments?
Maybe we close the public comment period?
I'd accept that motion.
I'll second.
I'll second it. So we know I was physically here.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passing. Moving back to staff comments, do you have something to add, Chris?
I'll, I'll add just a couple of thoughts. Staff's recommendation for continuance is, is from my perspective, also the fact that we hate to act in haste. We hate to act in haste, to, to hurry a decision. Sometimes that's good, sometimes it's not, right? But, but historically, when we do act in haste, we tend to make, our decisions aren't as thoughtful. And so that's why you see that recommendation for continuance, given the lack of information there. With the survey that's been provided, that does go a long way to clarify what is proposed, and it erases a lot of the questions staff has. Granted, we haven't had a full amount of time to re, to review that and make sure that there's continuity with what's being proposed in the application. I think that would be our primary concern. The other option you would have is to, if you wanted to act on it, you could act to deny it, you could act to continue it, you could act to approve it. Acting to approve it or deny it will move it to the county council. And really, you're not acting to approve or to deny, you're acting to recommend.
Recommend, yeah, that's what we're doing, so.
So, to be clear.
Give us a little more detail, Chris, we might ask. What are your concerns?
Main concern would be we have to verify that what they've proposed and what the survey reflects are the same. Now, Justin's told us they're the same. We just haven't had enough time to verify it and look through it. And so I'm not questioning what Justin said. All I'm stating is we haven't taken the time to review, we haven't had the time to review that and confirm it. And so that's our concern.
Is it just in the boundaries, though, or?
It's, it's in the boundaries. And I, it, it appears that the survey's accounted for the things we requested. And so it's pointing to the, the information we'd like to know, we just haven't verified it.
So if to do that, will you guys send the county surveyor out there or just reevaluate their survey?
We'll, we'll initially look at it to confirm that it matches what the application says. And then we will confirm that the boundaries close. So that means the bearings and distances match, and that, that they, everything works. But yeah, we run that through another surveyor that confirms those pieces. Now, the other option you have, if you were to make a recommendation, if there's an interest in moving it forward, and if you were to approve it, first you could make, you could identify any conclusion that you found was appropriate to say why this zone works in this location. So outside of the question about staff's recommendation for continuance is a question about if this works in this location. Does industrial zone make sense here? We already see that there's a pattern of it. Does it make sense to put more in that place? Conditional use permit items aside, does a zone make sense? If you feel it does, you can make a recommendation for approval, and you could also put a comment in there that it's pending staff's review of the, the survey.
So we can't put a condition on that, then?
Certainly. Well, not a condition, but a, a comment to council. Okay.
Just to allow that there's still to be some ongoing findings that could affect it negatively or positively?
Our approval's based on the fact that the plat works. If it doesn't, he just has to update the plat. And so it's not a, it's not a major thing unless there's a huge, like, issue where what's been proposed and we've had a public hearing on doesn't match what the plat says, because then we have to rehear it, because it's already been noticed. So that would be the big piece, it would just put a halt to everything and cease, cease the action there. So it's a little tricky, it's a little messy.
So if the plat's good, considering, assuming the plat's good, what other, what other red flags, if any, do you guys see?
Right, like what, what, yeah, what might you see if it doesn't?
I.
What are you looking for in that survey? Just that the lines don't match up?
Yeah.
We want to see if the lines match up and if it matches what they requested on their application and what we set the hearing for.
For some reason, my, I'm having a problem with my screen moving, but I'm seeing that that parcel right now that's marked, well, their, their current existing yard, it's marked "commercial." Is it commercial industrial or just commercial? See if somebody else can get in there.
We're going to confirm that right now.
That's a good question.
Well, the zone is commercial, the land type or building type that they identified.
Industrial.
Oh, the building, excuse me, I think you said the opposite.
The, the land type or building type they've identified is commercial, but the.
I, I don't know why my screen won't move, I'm just right at the edge of seeing land commercial.
And that, that, um.
Right there.
Designation and that, that's for tax purposes, so that's, but the zoning.
Okay, that, that was my question, because for some reason I can't.
The zoning is industrial, though.
Yeah, they just confirmed that. I can't get past the commercial.
So we'll just check to see if it matches. If it does, there's no issue from a process standpoint.
Well, would you guys be okay? I mean, basically, in, in listening, it sounds like the county, as long as in our proposal, if one of us was to propose that we proceed with this, that, uh, under a condition or conclusions, conditions, I guess we'd want to say.
Comment to the council.
So, if a comment.
Yeah, we, we, we feel that it works with the area, but it's also pending further staff, well, not pending. How, how would you want it worded?
I can fill out some language and see if you like that. If, if what you're saying is as a conclusion for approval is that it meets existing pattern of zoning in the area?
Yeah.
That's all you have to say.
But, okay, so it meets existing pattern for zoning, but how do you want it stated if we proceed that direction? How do you want the staff to prove?
About the plat?
Well, whatever clause you want in there to allow you guys to, to, in the event that you reviewed it and you found a problem, how, how do you want us to identify that? Or allow for that clause?
That's a good question. Let me think through that. Best case scenario, let's say everything matches. Then I would just send a separate note that's not tied to a conclusion that says, is, is almost a separate memo from the planning commission that states, if you're recommending approval based on that conclusion, the only other item was a confirmation or verification of the survey plat that was submitted. That, that further verification would need to be done. That your, that your consideration did not confirm that that acreage was correct. That that rezoned acreage.
So just further verification if survey plat needs finalized or reviewed, needs finalized?
Before it goes to the council, they can, they can review that, we can recommend it, and then they can review it before the council for final approval.
Yeah, for best case, for the applicant, it goes to the council. They can consider it, hold a public hearing and discuss it. And if it does match up, they can act. Now, if it doesn't match up, they can, they can send it back to the commission. And that doesn't help the applicant, it prolongs something.
But if he's confident.
But that's the only way we can move it ahead, that's, that's his risk.
You can approve it or deny it to move it ahead.
Yeah, and I think it's, it's, you know, zoning in that area is appropriate. And I don't, I think we're moving in the right direction to go ahead and make that rezone.
You want to do it, or do you want me to?
Yeah, I would recommend the rezone for the use, and.
I'd accept the motion if somebody's ready to make a motion.
You want to do it, or you want me to?
Go ahead, you get it, it's a note there.
Okay, so I, I would suggest to the county council that we recommend approval of the West Edge rezone. And we recommend that suggestion based on that we feel that this parcel meets the existing pattern of zoning. We also submit a recommendation, or no, not a recommendation, as part of our suggestion for approval, we acknowledge that there, at this time, there needs to be further verification of the survey plat prior to finalization. Will you clarify that, Lane?
The motion's.
That's the hardest part.
The motion's ammaged.
That's the hardest part.
I will second that, if we.
Okay, can I take this back to you to make sure it says what you want? So I said, I have Chris Schmitz, Chris Schmitz in motion to recommend approval to the county council for the West Edge rezone based on the rezonably existing pattern of zoning and acknowledged for the verification of the survey prior to finalization.
Chris is good at it, I'm good at it.
It got washed out by the.
Sorry, could you?
Yeah, Chris Schmitz in motion to recommend approval to the county council for the West Edge rezone based on the rezonably existing pattern of zoning and acknowledged for the verification of the survey plat prior to finalization.
Maybe is needed, so further acknowledgement, yeah.
Is needed, right.
We're fine.
Okay.
With that, we have a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you for the wordsmithing there.
I'd say you're the luckiest rancher around.
Those guys do know how to build a road, so, and they've always got excess gravel that they push off it.
I think they got plenty of equipment to move the snow and what have you for you as well.
Most of those truck jockeys go walking around the field. I got one bull that might cause a little trouble.
We're on to item seven tonight. We're going over amendments to Title 17 regarding a new use type for alcohol production or winery.
My first night and I get alcohol and cannabis.
Swing this this way so you don't have to.
You must be here because you're Greg's chief, right?
Yeah.
I assume staff has any comments or had some information for us? You want to go over?
Thanks, County.
What are you doing there?
So if, if you had a chance to review the memo I sent out, I'll, I'll pull that up here. Yeah, go ahead, Angie, if you'd mind. Going to touch on a couple of things. So this was sent out to you, it included also some of the information and discussion that's been had with the county council as they discussed whether or not to allow production of alcohol product in the unincorporated areas of the county. Sorry, I saw something I thought was wrong, but we're okay. I saw 202015, and I thought, or it was, anyway, 2015, I was 20, anyway. So a couple of pieces here, I've kind of laid out some possible pattern of, of how to proceed. You'll see that the first bullet point references the council from the April 27th meeting. And really, I chatted with the council to confirm what their direction was to the planning commission. What are they hoping to glean from this discussion we hope to have today and in, and meetings to come? So because the council approved the ability to produce alcohol in the unincorporated areas of the county, the next step was, well, what's the land use that fits that? So we had to develop a new land use type. And we had considerable discussion with the council over the past several months. So I wanted to confirm with them, because as time goes, you know, memories also tend to ebb and flow as do opinions. So we touched base with the council again on the 27th. And we have that list, questions really, and topics that the council wanted to be sure the commission addressed. And we'll get into some of the detail when you look at the draft code that staff has prepped, is maybe a good starting point. The next thing you see is the planning commission, first meeting, that's this meeting here in May, to discuss the council's priorities and review staff and attorney research on possible approaches. The second thing we would expect, we'll draft the possible ordinance reflecting council, their direction basically. And then, let me scroll down, I'm getting ahead of myself. And that would be then in June, that we review that draft ordinance and provide additional feedback. We would update that in between the next two meetings and hold a public hearing with the planning commission in July. So this would, for me, in my, from my perspective, this would be as fast as we could possibly go and still have a good discussion. Discussion today, we're going to draft ordinance after our discussion today or do some tweaks, and then come back and discuss it, take any other comment, and then have a public hearing after that. So we're going to have May, June, and July meetings with the commission to really kind of vet through. really kind of vet through what needs to happen here, so that gives us three months, two and a bit, really, months, to discuss that item, and then potentially make a recommendation at the July meeting to the county council, for them to consider the item in July or August timeframe, best case scenario, if at any point in this you feel like it needs more discussion, have more discussion, we're not in a rush, I've already said that the county, the staff does not like to rush through things, because it tends to be problematic in the long term, so we'd much rather you be thorough and clear as to what happens. You recall, we just did this similar type of process with small-scale slaughter facility, that one moved pretty quick, that.
Those good examples that you could go out and look at, is, and so, you know, even though the council asked you, I was in the meeting, and so, they asked you, what do we have comparables, what's going on in other counties, so?
So we want to be thorough, staff will be thorough, so you have good information to refer back to, we don't want you to make a decision just out of the blue or in a vacuum, we want you to have good context and understanding of the issues, so if you talk through these, I want you to be comfortable with asking questions, John Luthy is typically here, he was not able to attend tonight, but he's the one that primarily drafted the alcohol ordinance, and is actually more aware of the state requirements and the current county requirements, so while I might not be able to address some of those questions tonight, John should be present at our next meeting, or anytime if you wanted to touch base with him over the next month, and we can set something up also, whatever suits you, to talk through some of those requirements that the state has, that the county has now adopted and said in some allowances to allow that use to occur in the county, let me scroll down the rest of the way here, oh, really what we're talking about, council priorities and direction, so they really pointed out two possible approaches to amending the land use code, and this is with staff direction also, really, we can go back and we can amend agritourism's definition, and add wineries as one of the pieces to that, now, the second option was to create a new use-related definition for winery that exists on its own, staff recommended they produce, or come up with, take the approach of a new use-related definition for winery, reason being is the definition for agritourism we think needs some work, we recognize there's some funny loopholes and funny language in there from when it was first adopted, we'd like to clean that up and potentially broaden it to consider more varied uses, potentially, and maybe at that time, winery goes back in, maybe it doesn't, wineries are kind of a unique thing, but I think we can expand on that conversation as we move forward, as we pull up some different examples, now, we haven't done that research yet, so I don't have that tonight, but we'll do that research and see what's out there, I'm going to scroll through a little bit further here.
Chris, just off the top of your head, when did you guys start discussing this approximately? I mean, is this going on a year, it's going six months?
I'd say we're pretty close to a year, someone might, I can look up the exact date, but I don't recall, we've been.
It's been before the council for quite a while.
I've heard it there, I just was trying to get an idea on timeframe.
Good portion of 2020, we've been discussing this, if not the entirety of 2020, and some of that's been before the council, some of that's been just with the attorney's office, there's been significant discussion on the allowance to allow alcohol production, and even to the point that they've reviewed some of the land use corrections or draft language that we've provided, and I wanted to make clear to the council, you remember pretty clearly when we did the road discussion, and how that kind of just floated through here, and they were going to adopt whatever anyway, I think the problem there is that there wasn't a communication to make clear what was discussed with the council, and when it came to the commission, there wasn't a full understanding of what was going on there, so we're trying to avoid that this round, we want there to be clarity with what were the council's ban, and what they're proposing, and then the commission's going to get the full realm of their powers, whatever that means, to review and make a recommendation to the council that extends beyond their discussion, because really, the council's focus was on just adopting the allowance to allow alcohol production, the land use stuff we kept steering them away from as staff, because that really needs to be with the commission, where you're going to delve into some of the intricacies, what that needs to consider, and you may come to the same conclusions, you may come to different conclusions, we're going to try to provide a lot more information there, because that wasn't a fully, oh, I don't know what to call it, it needs more consideration. Oh, let's look here really quick, I think I've already referred to most of these pieces, really, the discussion tonight is just to familiarize you with the issues that might be attached to this use, we can look through the memos that were provided to the council, and then get your input on, I'll go through the code language here in a second, but get your input on if that's the right direction, and then give staff direction to say, we want you to pursue this line of research or investigation, just like we did with the small-scale slaughter facility, so you have comparison pieces, we can see if there's uses out there, we can set up a site visit to see what the operation looks like, so we can have an understanding of what impacts might be related to conditional use, if that's the route you pursue, I would like to just hop back, and I'm going to read through these questions that the council posed, so we just have it on the record, they wanted the commission to review, first of all, and these might sound familiar from our small-scale slaughter discussion, it sounds very familiar, how to limit the scale of an operation, how to limit the impact on neighboring properties, what are the possible impacts to the agricultural zone, so they want to make sure that by allowing this in the ag zone, they're not creating an issue with what they allow in the ag zone, remember, the purpose of the ag zone is primarily agriculture, and anytime we put other businesses or things into it, it tends to dilute what the purpose of that zone is, so we want to make sure that what this use is meets what the purpose of the ag zone is.
Yeah, I mean, I think of our place in Hyde Park, you know, we have the, I can't even think what they call it, but they've got the vineyards out there.
That's the place?
That's what we're talking, that's what brought this together.
Yeah, and since they've made, you know, they're building and have weddings and receptions,
and I don't know how balanced, I don't know how much they get off of the agricultural part versus the entertainment part, or whatever category that is, as far as renting their building.
Yeah, I don't know either, and we typically don't delve into the financials, per se, but we also don't want to hamstring a business by setting up a use that immediately restricts development or growth of that business, that's not well thought out.
But then, to look at, are you going to produce wine that is used just, or by an alcoholic, you know, just used in that facility, or produced there and then sold, bottled, and gone out, and then to say, well, then how big has that become, and do they only do it with the product that's produced right there, or like the dairy cheese plants, if they only, if they only were local milk, how big would they, could they be, but they have expanded out beyond that, to where they bring in milk from outside places, so when we start talking about a winery or a brewery, how do we limit that, to say, well, you can only do, you can only, you can only make wine out of what, or beverage out of what you produced on your ground, so then that stays in agriculture, because we're using just what we produce, but then if we start importing, then could it become a whole manufacturing thing in the middle of an ag zone?
So, I did quite a bit of research this week myself, I wish I'd had time to do more, I wanted to look at the state code and what they have, the thing that was interesting to me, well, and the reason I ask, Chris, and I don't want to belittle the time that's already been taken, but I feel one thing that we have to keep, I mean, I feel bad personally now, that the meat deal has taken as long as it has, we went down there to Ogden, and we determined, hey, this is a simple, great little operation, let's get it going, we needed it in this valley eight months ago, and we still don't have it, so the one thing I feel is, you know, when we're talking livelihoods, if somebody's wanting to do this, and I think it's, I think it's good that the council has already set the direction that they're going to allow it, I guess the point that I'm making is, I just don't want to see us hold up somebody's opportunity to get going, when they've already been working on it a year, but the second thing, and I wasn't trying to cut you off, but just like the meat, a lot of this stuff is already dictated by the state, so if you're.
I'd say worse.
If you're hanging your shingle that you're producing your own wine, right there, you're already limited and restricted, that if that wine doesn't have a certain percentage of your product in it, it don't fly, labeling, you can't misrepresent what you're doing, and I don't want to.
So those are the kinds of things that you would go find out, what the state.
A lot of that, yeah.
And then what's going on around it, what other, what is the language in other counties? I can think of one down by Moab that was, started off as a little recreation facility, they put some, some, or some grape groves up there on the hillside, and now they have this small tourism winery scenario, and.
What was your experience when you were looking at that, I mean?
Well, just, I was down there at the recreation deal, and then they said they were building some, they were going to put in some grapes up here on the hill, and then the last time I was through it, or.
But as far as preserving agriculture, and that's the.
Well, that looked like it was preserving agriculture, but were they able to produce enough, or were they, you know, what were their, what was their wording in that county that allowed that to just stay small, or was there provision in there that they could bring in the grapes from somewhere else, and start really manufacturing and bottling and shipping all over the world, kind of thing?
Well, think back to our small-scale slaughter facility, and I'll touch on the other questions that the commission, or council raised in a minute, when we looked at that, we limited, limited it by the number of animal units they could process in a given year, and so, it didn't matter where they came from, in fact, when we were there, there was somebody coming in from Steeds to drop off some stuff, because they do their mobile processing, and then bring in the carcass to be actually processed at that location, so the question is, where do you draw the line, and that was a question you had with the small-scale slaughter, saying, what makes the distinction between this, small-scale slaughter's operation, and a miller's, well, we limited the number of animal units, and so, when we discussed this with the council, one of the things they brought up, well, let's just limit the number of cases they can sell, because if they're going to do tasting at the facility, we're getting a little in the weeds here with the specific example, and I hate to get tied to specifics, because this is a broader issue, but I think it's good for this example, if they're going to do tasting, but they also want to sell some of their product, we have to figure out and make a decision where that line might be, what's a reasonable number of cases, so there's some of this information that the interested party has provided to me, that we'll share with you as a commission, as we continue this discussion, of what qualifies in the current vernacular or processing for a winery, for what's a small amount of cases in a year, and try to pin that down to see if that makes sense, because we already have an area called ag manufacturing in our code, so how is this different, what level of production's going to occur that still preserves what agriculture is in the ag zone, and makes it separate from what occurs that's a manufacturing or a production-type facility, that then overwhelms and becomes a primary use instead of the agriculture, so there is a balance there, where is that line drawn, we'll have to research that, and you're going to have to chew on what that looks like, we'll go into all the details you're asking, but yeah, I don't have an answer, I don't have a specific answer.
It's interesting, though, there, too.
I think it's hard, anytime you put a number like that in an ordinance or code or anything, it's going to be outdated, you know, within a few years, is this something that you're revisiting all the time, and, you know, same thing with like fees, or any time you put straight numbers in there, it's outdated pretty soon.
Especially when you're dealing with agriculture, and there's some agricultural facilities that are continuing to expand, they get bigger over time, so how do you live with that, I mean?
And capacities change, what, you know, what you can do on a certain acre, you know, I mean, how much you can produce.
They could move to that other use, so we do have other uses they could step up through, what we're creating is a middle use, like with the small-scale slaughter, so they can move from this winery, potentially, right, we'll look at that, to then move to ag manufacturing, so that takes them away from being primarily ag to being primarily production, and so if that was their need, and they wanted to grow and expand, then they are changing as a use, and we should reflect that, and make sure that the impacts will change as they make that transition, potentially, right, we're guessing, since we haven't had this use before, so we'll do the research on that end to see if there are other existing similar type situations, so you have good information to base this on, I think these are good questions to raise, what fits, where's the middle ground, and not even the middle ground, but what makes sense practically, and also with the code and with the zone.
One other thing, just a couple of quick points there, Lane, we remember like yesterday, the ski operation out on the south end of the valley, we started out small, we didn't even have that approved, they're already coming back growing to the second one, and we don't even have that resolved, and then they had their own problems within, but personally, I don't want to see that, nor do I, I feel that we got to be respectful of a person's opportunity to earn, especially if we, if we're not in that industry or don't understand, we got to, you know, we can't restrict somebody's earning, we still got to make sure that it's compliant in all the ways, two other things that just come to mind, even on our production area, so if we were to, I already commented on how the state, with their marketing, you know, if they say it's raised or locally raised, they have to be a certain percentage, but what happens if we have an early spring one year, you know, we can't restrict the person so much, what happens if we have an early frost, and their whole crop's wiped out, will they just shut down that whole year, there's a lot of factors with agriculture drought we're in right now, that it's out of our control, so we don't want to restrict them that they're going to be shut down, but the second thing, too, is back to the state, there's taxation, incentives, motives there, there's a lot of governing factors here that I think's going to be real beneficial to help the county, as they come together on drafting this.
I think so, let's, let me finish up those last.
I think a lot will be resolved as we go through the staff report, a lot of these questions will be, with what you're saying.
Yeah, I think so, these are great questions, I'm going to hit the last three pieces from the council, and then let's skip to the code, how is the preservation of agricultural land encouraged, how is access to these types of facilities addressed, and what amendments to the agritourism definition are needed, so their hope is, as you go through this process, at a minimum, you've addressed those six points, and make sure that we have clarity with those items for the council's sake, I think there will be more things that you address beyond this, and you've already raised some of those questions, and I think they're good questions, I'm going to go ahead and scroll down, oh, no, I've got it, another spot, sorry. So I'm opening up the, some of the draft language that's been put together.
Didn't you decide not to amend that?
So this has just been discussed with the council, no action's been taken on any of this. Yeah, so this one's different than the one in your packet, this shows some minor updates that the council has proposed, and my apologies for not getting this version to you, and I can point out the distinctions really quickly, and all of this is open for amendment, this is all just discussion, so keep that in mind, that's why it's all there, so one of the questions you brought up is addressed here, if there is an insufficient supply of its onsite ag products due to crop failure or damage, ag products not grown onsite may be used to produce a quantity of wine equal to no more than the previous year's wine production, the use of agricultural products grown offsite beyond, beyond the allowed 30% is only permitted for the production year during which the failure or damage occurred, so this is all on-the-fly drafting, it's not based on any strong factual support, so this might paint a picture, though, for what the council's thinking, so what we need to do is confirm if this makes sense in other instances, what are other places doing to address this possibility of crop damage or failure?
Why was it changed from 70 to 51, or from 50 to 70?
There were, there was discussion with the council about if that was an appropriate approach, that number, the last meeting we had, they said, we don't like any of the percentages, just limit it by cases, because percentages are even harder to verify than case numbers, I'm not going to go out there and identify percentages, and if the state's not doing it, I doubt that the applicant's going to do it, it just leads to a major enforcement issue for the county, which we don't, we don't pursue.
I think a lot of it's better, like, on the percentage, isn't it more better regulated?
Well, it's a lot easier to identify how many cases they've produced, we can verify that for what they sell and what they move, without too much effort, percentages, we're going to get a little bit in the weeds there, and this section of code's going to get a little bit hairy on how we define the percentages, so a good question, I think we should look into it still, it's just there, so the first option, or the preferred option, was just to come up with a separate use, it's outside agritourism, but it's interesting, as the council moved through it, they wanted to make it like it was agritourism, in fact, you'll see that they wanted to allow for over. In fact, you'll see that they wanted to allow for override accommodation. Um, and that's basically pulled from the agritourism piece and then just popped in here. Um, and then they also had a preference to delete number five. Uh, oops.
Deleted?
They wanted to, but I don't know that we should. I, I just want you to look at all the stuff. This is just to give you an idea of what the council's thinking. I wouldn't uh hop on any of these recommendations yet. I think we have more research to do. Um, you'll notice number six is also crossed out, but the last meeting they count, they kind of came back to that and said, you know what? We do need to limit it by the number of cases. And so that may be a better option.
Chris, did you build this from the state?
No.
Where did you build it from?
Uh, we built this in discussion with the council. But again, this was based on on the fly discussion.
Well, there was a lot of discussion with the council that night, so.
And that was the most recent one. Um, there's been multiple discussions and there's also with the county, um, an ordinance policy and review committee. That's looked at a lot of these other pieces before it ever goes to the council for like the alcohol ordinance that was adopted and approved. All those things have come to, been into play. Oh, one thing I neglected to say is that ordinance piece that was adopted, it doesn't allow that use to incur unless a land use ordinance has been adopted that allows it to happen. And associated fees would have to be part of that. So while they did adopt and allow that, it's on basically on hold until the land use portion is complete. So it's like you were saying, Brandon, it does hold things up a little bit for an applicant trying to move things through. But again, staff's okay with that. I'd rather us be thorough and, and to keep in mind, a three month process to get there is fast. That is not slow, that is fast. That is especially, that's only three meetings for you. That's a lot to cover in three meetings. And keep in mind that we're missing three members from our planning commission tonight. So that leads to more discussion as you work through it as a group. I'm gonna go back to the beginning so we can touch on all the pieces here on winery. I'm gonna read through these and I apologize for that, but I think it's helpful for discussion. And then I'll point to some of the comments on the side from staff um that were reflected in some previous council's discussion. So a winery um would be identified as an agricultural processing facility used for commercial purposes or purpose of processing grapes to produce wine. Processing includes wholesale sales, crushing, fermenting, blending, aging, storage, bottling and administrative office functions. The following also apply. So these are some of the conditions that would allow a use to qualify as a winery. A winery must be accessory to a primary agricultural production use. So that's our very first indicator that this is ag. It's separate from manufacturing. So primarily there has to be an ag use attached to this property. Uh, number two, a, a winery must be located on land that qualifies as land under agricultural use. It is actively devoted to agriculture as defined by the Farmland Assessment Act. And be located on a legal parcel or contiguous legal parcels that are five acres or larger in size. So this is really, both of those things tie together. So Farmland Assessment Act says they can qualify as green belt. Um, this also adds the additional piece that it has to be on a legal parcel, contiguous legal parcels that are five acres or larger in size. Why the item B is there is because under the Farmland Assessment Act, a property can qualify as a green belt. Uh, maybe it's two acres in size. But if they have another property they own that's not even contiguous, that's twenty acre, whatever it is, that does qualify. They can combine those together to say, under the taxation rules, we're seeing this as one. So it qualifies under the Farmland Assessment Act and can qualify for a green belt rate for taxation. So what this does is it raises that requirement a little bit more and says, actually, we want you to have at least five acres here. You recall with small scale slaughter facility, you reduce that to two acres. Cause you felt that was appropriate after we did our site visit. So in that case, for small acre or small scale slaughter facility, um, two acres would work. As long as they had some other property somewhere else that they could qualify as green belt or farm, under the Farmland Assessment Act. So in the long run, you are protecting or recognizing the agricultural component. Um, with the two acre piece, this emphasizes it more that it has to be tied to it with a five acre minimum size. But that could also tie to a contiguous piece, just not something that's off some other part of the county. Uh, number three, wine produced by process, by the processing facility must be produced from, we had fill in the blank. Or more of the agricultural products that have been grown on site or on the contiguous legal parcels. Um, this was included in reference to the agricultural or ag manufacturing um use, which requires seventy-five percent. Has to come from the property or contiguous properties. So.
Did we end up doing? I don't know.
This was a reduction in that to say fifty-one percent. And then the council came back and said, no, we want it to be higher. We want it to be seventy. But it's keeps bouncing around cause the last time we met with them, it was, let's skip the percentages. We don't like that. Let's just base it on number of cases. So you can see we're not set on any of those specifics. Oh, you're okay. So keep an open mind is all I'm saying with some of these discussions. It's been all over the place. And I don't mean that in a negative sense. It's just, um, when you're not basing it on.
Lot of discussion, yeah.
History or another related use or some research, you're gonna bounce all over.
But we, we can still compare this real, very realistically to the meat. Cause we, we started off so broad and chased that so far. We went down there, looked at it and boom, it's done.
It was so clear, wasn't it? It was very helpful. Um, there is a, a winery in the valley that's in the Mendon area. Honey Slide, Honey Rock Slide?
Slide Ridge.
Slide Ridge, sorry, I got it wrong. Slide Ridge, it's out of Mendon. We could pop over there. There's probably some others that are close-ish we could see. I don't wanna drive you clear down to St. George or uh, Fat End.
California.
It's in a long state.
Oh, a little bit of a drive. It's only four hours. Ish. Um, we'll try to find some things that are local and then to get you some good examples.
What are the code, have we looked at that other code that's in those other areas? Are we, we point date?
We'll look at that.
Okay.
So at the time when we were meeting with the council, we discouraged them from making a land use decision. Cause that's your responsibility. They're already gonna have to review it again. Heavy lifting should be done here. And so we pushed them off on making that decision until they decided to allow, to allow alcohol. I mean, there's no point for you to make that decision if there still wasn't, it wasn't allowed under county code otherwise. So that's where they're at now with allowing the alcohol. Now we're into that research phase and we'll look at places like Boise. We'll look at all these other wineries that exist through the state of Utah that fall under those same state code requirements. But we'll give you a, a variety of options to consider. Um, and we'll work to address those questions that the council raised also. So as you address those questions and have those questions, we've, we've kinda covered those bases. Um, we already read through the crop failure piece. Um, there's retail sales, this is number five. Retail sales tours and taste, tasting facilities of wine and related accessory promotional items are also permitted as part of the winery operation. And then there's some other additional items that qualify that. Retail sales tours and tastings means tours of the winery or tasting of beverages or both produced by the winery during operating hours. The wine producer may serve food in conjunction with tours and tastings provided. Again, more qualifications. All advertising to the public is only for tours or tasting or both. The amount and type of food is intended to be secondary and complimentary to and part of the tours and tastings. So basically it's not a restaurant with wine. It's a tasting with maybe some small scale food stuff on the side.
Because the state requires food with it.
There's, there's rules attached to tastings and to restaurants if you're gonna serve out, there's different rules. I, I am not versed well enough onto comment on tonight. I know they exist and I need to be familiar, more familiar. If John were here, he could give us some more details on some of those pieces. The food arrives at the establishment ready for service or in a state generally ready for consumption. Getting back to that restaurant idea. So typically in the county, if it's a restaurant, it requires a commercial zone. There's different impacts. There's different types of things that, that the county has determined that, that would need to be considered if it's a restaurant. This number five is crossed out. I don't know if it needs to be. This talks about blending uh, um, material from other sources. And not just talking about someone bringing in raspberries and if they turn into wine, but actually bringing in um, material, juice or whatever it is. Other types of pro- somewhat processed material. Um, that may need to have some consideration. I think our research will help clarify what's necessary there.
And isn't that the same category as your four that you've added the crop failure or none, or for different reasons? They might have an insufficient supply.
It's similar. I think the one above, let's, let me go to that. This is referring to agricultural products coming in, not processed alcohol or something products. You could debate that. Those might be similar. There's definitely overlap. I think that's a great question. But this is all the stuff they've considered. And what kind of, you can kinda see where they've been on that and what staff's prepared based on their comments. Uh, let me scroll down a little bit here. Number six, first number six that's crossed out, production of wine is limited to no more than blank cases per year. And there may be some legitis, legitimacy tied to that um with what's professional practice. That may make sense to the commission, it may not, titles together. But we'll provide that information so you can see what's there and see if there's a legitimate correlation. And if there is, you can, you can identify it and say that's, this makes sense. Um, and then the last piece that uh is interesting, overnight accommodation is permitted as follows. Guest rooms must be located within an owner occupied dwelling that meets the minimum building and fire code standards. And no more than a total of four guest rooms with a maximum occupancy of two per room, not counting children fifteen years of age and under.
Now, was that similar to what was crafted? Is that repeating like when we did uh?
You basically just brought that over.
Elk Ranch?
Agritourism.
Agritourism, okay.
Basically carried over. The Elk Ranch one's a little different, if I remember right, Angie, is that?
Well, let's not go there. That's where I just was wondering though.
Okay. Um, but yeah, they, they wanted something in there that considered it. Um, I don't know if it's necessary. It's fairly restricted to say that the guest rooms have to be part of an owner occupied dwelling. The last one that was approved was Casey Snyder's down outside Paradise area. Um. He wants to do something, but doesn't want it to be, to be part of his house, right? He'd prefer to have it be a separate thing and run like, almost like a bed and breakfast that he doesn't live in. But it's up to the ca- the commission to determine if that makes sense.
Well, that's why I was thinking of the, the deal down in Moab that it started off as a resort over here. And then they put the grapes in and now they're got. Yes. It was the other way around?
The Moab Winery is Castle Creek.
Yeah.
And their, their guy who started that winery was the guy who wrote the state law for winery manufacturing.
Oh, okay.
Wrote it decades and decades ago, like way back in the eighties. And then someone, he sold out of it like ten, fifteen years later. And this father and son bought it and they started this resort.
Oh, okay.
And so it was actually one of your first.
So just as a side note, this is a big pickle. And sorry Keith, I'm gonna have you come up to the mic if they're, if they want more conversation, but go ahead and hold if they want.
Studied it a little.
Does the commission want yours more for Mr. Mickle?
Yes, Mr. Mickle. You got any comments? I mean, you're pretty up to date on what we're looking at here. What, what insight could you give us on some of the things we're looking at here? I mean, we're seeing a lot of some yellow areas. Just add some clarity with what we're looking at.
Um, first off on the discussion round, I didn't know where the guest room things came from. That keeps coming up in this discussion and art, we were always like, who asked for that? But we're not. But um, as far as the wineries go, like Castle Creek is a good example. They buy grapes from Spanish Valley, which is like the next valley over, I believe. That's where there's farmers over there that grow grapes for them too. Plus they grow their own grapes. And there's also a winery south of them down. It's a very tiny winery that's just south of Moab and just off the road. It's called Spanish Valley Winery. Um, our wine, the problem in getting into this is that wine is a blended product. There isn't a single winery in the country that does not trade grapes with adjacent landowners and other valleys. Because you're, you're trying to blend a flavor together. And it's a collaborative venture. The, the wineries may, you may think they're antagonistic, but they're kind of a brotherhood of, hey, you're doing this. Well, I want, get some of that from you. And you know, this would go really good with my Cabernet. This would go good with my Riesling and they, and they, it's to create quality. For a winery to succeed in this valley, our products got to be top notch. And because people aren't gonna be expecting to get a good bottle of wine in Cache Valley, Utah at first, until we prove to them it is possible. We have over ten acres of grapes planted right now, you know, vineyard. That's fifteen thousand dollars an acre just to plant that. You know, we're putting two new acres in right now. It's, we're not doing fifteen thousand an acre to go buy grapes from someone else. We want our grapes in it. And like you said, the TTB regulates the snot out of wineries. They regulate what we can put on the label. If we say Cache County wine, it has to be seventy-five percent Cache County wine. But it doesn't mean that twenty-five percent didn't come from my friends in Moab, my friends in Twilla. There's guys growing grapes in Twilla now. And there's a big huge vineyard going in up in Snowville. Um, they get taxed first and they inspect our facilities. The state inspects our facilities. Um, the food, the way they worded that was brilliant, cause that's basically what we would wanna do. We want, would wanna showcase Slide Ridge honey, Rock Hill Creamery and a charcuterie plate, pre-prepared. We don't want a restaurant. Um, I mean, is there any questions specifically? The case lot numbers is the best way to regulate wineries. It's the way all other states regulate a winery size is by case size. Um, and the definition of a small winery is fifty thousand or less. That's an enormous winery to us. The state actually dictates twenty thousand gallons for a taxation break. But um, you know, I, to me, a feasible number is in that fifteen to twenty thousand case area would be nice to like cap it at and say anything bigger than that. Slide Ridge, if you do go to them, they're a five thousand case winery. And most people in Mendon don't even know they're there. They don't have a tasting room. We have to have a tasting room and be able to sell on premise because a small boutique winery has to be able to sell on site. If our wine goes into the state liquor store system, it vanishes. Slide Ridge doesn't even sell hardly any into the state liquor store system. What they do is they travel in, they sell, they make us vinegar honey. And they sell that at farmers markets in states where you can actually sell your wine at a farmer's market. That can't happen in Utah, but in say Nevada, New Mexico, Arizona, they can. And so they sell their wine out of farmer's markets and out of like local events where people are coming to buy their vinegar too. But their product is really famous if you're outside of Utah. Cause you can get it outside of Utah, um, other than that.
So you're saying the best way, one of the things that continue to come up is small scale. So the best way to limit small scale on a winery, we're talking case count. I'm just, if yours, if, let's say you're, everything goes great, we don't wanna limit the upside of it. So what would be, would you consider the upside of small scale?
It'd take us four years to break even on this.
But as far as the case count?
And, and that would be, our business plan is to be at, say by year four, we're at twenty-five hundred cases. And by year five, we would like to be growing to five. The problem is you plant your grapes and this part of the reason you need to be able to bring grapes in from outside is that, is that your demand may increase more faster than your grapes do. When I, that two acres we're planting this year of Cabernet Franc and, and Blau Francish, that's three years till I get a grape, four years till I get full production. It takes time and you know, you have capital costs and there isn't a winery that doesn't start with, with needing help from their neighbors. You know, we do have blackberries we can put in it too and raspberries. Um, as far as the, the blending of pre-made wine, the only, in winemaking, there's a thing you do to create um, a sherry or a port style wine. And that is you bring in a concentrated brandy, which is grape. Brandy, if you don't know, is when you take wine and you distill it. And there's a winery in, in Layton called Be, The Hive Winery. And they also have a distillery, is, they have two businesses, a winery and a distillery. Their winery is just pure fruit. They don't do grapes. It's only fruit. That's their niche and that's why they exist in the industrial zone is cause they're this weird anomaly that makes um, pear wine and blackberry wine. And they buy a lot from Merv Weeks. That's, it's one of his biggest sources. He tries to get all his fruit from Utah. But he also distills some of that into brandy. And what you do is in, when wine is fermenting, you're, you're, normally wine can only hit, and in our valley, wine would only hit about eleven to twelve percent alcohol. Based on the sugar that our climate will give us. Well, a lot of times what you do is you arrest that fermentation at eight percent. And you do that by pouring in brandy spirits, which is concentrated brandy. And that kills all the fermentation and stops it. And it creates a very sweet wine. But you use, you're using like, we would use his distilled spirit to knock that in and create a, a sweet wine with it. So if you, it's the problem of if you dig into the woods on this too far, you guys are gonna be very big. So if you, it's the problem of if you dig into the woods on this too far, you guys are going to be very big experts on how wine is made.
Bootleggers.
Yeah, and, and, and on that percentage thing, I've already discussed with Western Ag Credit and they will not even loan us money for a business where the county government is so embedded with our production side. They're like, well, do we ask them for collateral too, when they're the ones dictating what you can produce, when you can produce it, how much you can produce it? And what if you can't meet the demand and you need, you need to bring something in? It's a, that's a regulation that there isn't a single business in this community that the government, local government has ever stepped that far into. So case count to me is the only way to go. And you guys can decide what looks like an, an albatross. I will tell you this, everywhere that there's wineries, when you go up into Yakima Valley and Boise, the property values around them go up, they don't go down. Because they're beautiful, people want vineyard setting, they want that. Our venue is set in a vineyard for that purpose. You know, it's because we created that beautiful place, we control that view and we feel that it, you know, it should benefit our farm to be able to sell that view either for a wedding or for someone to come out and taste some wine that was made on our farm. That's probably more than you mean, no.
Any other questions for Keith?
So you, you don't want any percentages that have to be from your grapes. It may be that on some years, the, the wine that you sell has none of your own grapes in it.
Last year, our farm got hit by a freak hailstorm, Urinhide Park, then you were just south of it, but if you were from us north, it destroyed that cornfield below us. And it, it, most of our grapes went into shock and dropped their fruit, but the ones that did keep it were all lacerated. The hail was these stones that had spikes and it just lacerated and completely, our, our canes this year still have the scars on them from that. We still got some, we, it destroyed our blackberries too, but we did get some raspberries. So on that year, we could have put some raspberries into something, but we lost, we had a brewery in Salt Lake that was gonna buy our grapes last year. And I had to just, I said, I, the quality of these is too bad, because when you lacerate a grape, you get grape, you get botrytis mildew in it. And then when you go to ferment that, it creates a cloud and you end up with a really poor product. So I was just like, he was still wanted it, but I'm like, I'm not giving you these, it's, I can't put my name, Mount Naomi Farms on that grape. You know?
And so you are saying, none of these?
There could be years when we have, in twenty seventeen, on May twenty-fourth, there was a, or twenty-second, right in there, there was a hard freeze and our grapes were in flower. And we got fifty percent less grapes that year. That was, my dad had never even seen a freeze that late, but it, it, it cost, the entire valley lost its apples, there were no apples in the whole valley that year.
Keith did for the state, I, 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 I'm positive, well, you already identified to the state allows you to only market your, your wine or spirits as locally grown if they're a certain percentage. So even in that scenario though, do they allow over a certain?
I would have to change my label if I was to sell.
You'd have to in that year.
In that year, that I could not put on a Cache County wine, I couldn't put into a Utah wine, even if it, if the grapes didn't come from Utah. If you say it's Utah, then it has to be, it has to be fifty-one percent Utah grapes, there's some number, I can't remember that one.
Takes cares, takes care of itself.
It does, and then, and that's through the federal government. That's not the state doesn't regulate me there, that's the federal government and they are also the, well, the state's pretty mean, but the federal government, they get their cut of the taxes first. You pay your taxes to the federal government when you declare the wine alcohol, when, so when it goes from sugar to alcohol and you say, it's done. That's usually two weeks after harvest. You cut your check to the TTB, which is a branch of the Alcohol Tobacco and Firearms Bureau, and you cut it then. And if you don't, they will be there to arrest you. And then the state gets theirs when we, when they're, and the state taxes wineries at above twenty thousand gallons at eighty-eight percent tax. And then this county gets sales tax on that. And in our situation, everything would need to go through our tasting room and even if a restaurant locally wanted to sell our wine, they would have to buy our wine at our building. We can't deliver the wine to them by state code. We have, they have to come to us and buy it and then that means, so it means everything we produce, the sales tax stays in this valley. We're not wholesaling anything, there's no wholesale, no, there's no wholesaling, it's, the sales tax comes to this county. You know?
When can you start building?
It'll take us a long time to get ready to build.
And if you.
Well, I just say, we've got enough information, just hand it back to Chris and.
Yeah.
If you don't go through this process.
Appreciate it.
If you don't go through this process, it's called bootlegging?
Well, you are allowed to make two hundred gallons of wine out of your house per adult person. If you have two people, you can get a two hundred gallon, so legally. And that was even held during prohibition because you don't want to take the wine away from an Italian, they will go into civil war. And they also had to allow it for sacrament, it was a religious.
Thanks Keith.
Good education.
So I guess next steps for the commission would be, are you comfortable with the direction we're headed with this being a unique use type first of all? Addressing all those questions that we brought up and that the council's brought up and we start to massage, I, I won't even bring back a draft code with this, right? We're gonna come back next time with the discussion again.
Okay.
Um, with all the research done to say, here's what other folks are doing, uh, we may even try to set up, uh, we'll see if we have time to set up a site visit. Working with some of these other places to see what makes sense. Slide Ridge is the only one I'm familiar with that's close, that we could just pop over and look at. Uh, the others are gonna be probably a little more of a distance to get to, may not be quite what we're looking for. This one, the Slide Ridge seems to be closer than that small scale type idea.
Would it be worth it though to contact the county that Moab's in?
Oh, we'll, we'll do other research outside of this area. So when we do research.
Napa Valley, California, they're, I mean, they're pretty.
Um, Cali, we, we don't go too far afield because we're not comparing apples or grapes to grapes anymore. Um, because local restrictions start to have an effect. That they might do something in California that we can't do here, or there's more restrictions there than, than we have to have here. We're gonna stay more representative of our population, of our county and of the rules that we operate under. So we'll typically look Washington County, we're gonna go to Weber County, we're gonna check Boise area, that's another good comparison from a population standpoint and growth standpoint, uh, from a land use side. They're a little ahead of us on that curve, but we're heading in that same direction. So we look at places that are similar to us and that we're, we're gonna be in the next couple of years or so, five, ten years. So we'll pull all that information, you'll usually have like a small scale slaughter facility, we gave you, um, I don't know, seven or eight or nine, ten? I can't remember how many examples for reference. And then you can look at those and get a picture of it and staff is gonna have an opinion, be able to give you some direction there. Uh, if we have questions, we're okay to reach out with Keith too and say, hey, we bumped into this, Keith has some good resources we can talk through. Um, and bring all that stuff back and have more of that discussion. Um, what I would like to do next time even is I'm gonna ask John Luthy to prepare some of his presentation he gave to the council. Um, so you have a full picture of what's been presented to the council on the whole alcohol discussion that's been had. As to what types of use, or what types of alcohol production the county's approved. Um, because there are some specific rules tied to that, that will, it should play into some of your understanding and discussion about the winery. We'll bring all that back to you for further discussion, but I, it's, it's more appropriate, instead of us trying to move through a bunch of stuff right now, letting some of these ideas simmer. But you think about what's happening and if you have questions, please contact us as staff, um, and throw questions our way. Just send us an email, say, hey, I had another question that came up, is after our discussion, I want you to focus on some of this. And we'll look at that and tie it in with whatever else has been sent our way.
So my daughter lives in Colorado and a couple of years ago, we were visiting her and so we went over to Boulder to the Coors Manufacturing Plant. And so we went, they had free tours and we waited in line for at least an hour. There were lots of people in line for these free tours and their place is so big that we were in line for a bus to then go over to their facility where we could go into it. They have little shuttle buses. Um, and my daughter remembered that halfway through the, and so when you first get there, they ID'd you and put a wristband on. And we didn't, we weren't going to drink and so we didn't have to be ID'd, um, so we could just walk through the tour. And then my daughter remembered halfway through that there was a sampling. And then at the end, there was just a big room, probably bigger than this room, and they had, and so the people that wanted a sample, they went up to the counter and their wristband is how they marked it off or punched it, I don't know what they did. Um, but I feel like they were allowed two or three, but they had soda for us too, so you know, you could get a Coke or something. Um, but it was just a wide open room with a bunch of small tables and chairs and it was fine. And you know, there's lots of things there that Utah doesn't allow, as I read through this Utah code, because the kids would not be able to see them actually pour that, um.
They wouldn't be allowed in the.
In the room, right, they had, yeah, they had to be separate rooms, yeah. And I think they did have vending machines, it talks about like, you know, Utah says you have to have food in there. Um, yeah, certainly wasn't a self-serve.
Utah, Utah only allows in a tasting room of five, they're four or five ounces served in the tastings. But if you're serving ten wines, you have to divide that amongst five ounces. And five ounces is less alcohol in wine than there would be in a can of beer.
Yeah, and that's what the state says, you can have five ounces of wine or two and a half ounces of spiritus liquor or sixteen ounces of beer. But yeah, and again, to your comment of COVID and essential businesses, Colorado shut down their breweries for only a couple of weeks before they realized that was an essential business. And those, oh, all those microbreweries opened right back up during COVID. So my other friend at work, every year she goes with her girlfriends and they do a winery trip in California. And they go, and she said they do it as an event and they can choose between like fifty different ones. And they, but they drive, they pick their, the ones they want, some charge, some don't, and they get those wristbands too. And the driver gets a different colored one saying, she doesn't get alcohol, because I think they pay for that event and she says they usually just go to the free ones.
Well, we'll, we'll look forward to the discussion in the upcoming meeting, so.
Yeah, is that good direct, have I restated that clearly enough to?
Is there anything specific, any specific direction tonight that we want to give staff that we would not, would like to exclude here or?
I, I think you've got a good focus on what questions we've got, the same things that the council did.
Leave that door open as wide as possible right now, um, so we can have a full discussion the next round.
Awesome, thanks Chris. In my packet, I didn't have, I was missing the last pages for eight.
Are we gonna have candles?
There's a link, so you guys remember that?
Yes.
Thanks Keith.
I didn't think we were actually gonna talk about it.
I know, I know. So this is a, are we ready to move to item eight then, Chair?
Yes, please, I, I, I just don't very prepared on it, I, I'm just curious what we're doing or if you were, if we have. Are you ready to move in that direction or?
Well, the intent tonight was to have a discussion with the commission, if there's additional input you had on those maps we made available. Um, if there's not been time for you to review it, or you haven't been able to review that at all, then um, we are probably not gonna cover much tonight. Because there needs to be some time put into that, uh, those, those two maps, and I don't know if Alinda's been given those either, I don't recall.
I had that link, but I didn't get that far.
Okay, so what those links involve, there's two different links, they kind of point to the same thing. One gives you all the information all at once, if I recall, Angie, correct me if I'm off here, please. And the other one gives you the ability to kind of turn things off and on, to see what you like the look of. Now, I'm jumping ahead a little bit because what this is about is, oh boys, last year, year before, I'm losing track now. Um, the state allowed the production of medical cannabis, um, but it limited the number of licenses, I think right now they've issued eight. Um, none of those are occurring here, we do have things like hemp in the valley, there is a, there is a location, I think in North Logan, I forgot the name of it. That is a licensed purveyor of, of medical cannabis. But we don't have anyone in the valley that currently has a license from the state to grow medical cannabis. And so what happened when the state adopted this rule is it said, if, if this, if for example, with the county has not adopted an ordinance that allows a place for medical cannabis to occur. Then it has to go in one of your agricultural industrial zones and it can be permitted anywhere in that zone. So right now, as it stands, under the state code, if someone came in for, they got a permit from the state, came into the county to place a facility, they could put it anywhere in the ag zone that they wanted. So what this is considering is, where do we want to limit the, the placement of these types of facilities?
Not anywhere they want to, the state does have some buffering.
Oh, yes, sorry, thanks Angie.
Isn't there one of these just?
There's some buffering requirements.
Just northeast of the crossroads, over to Tremonton?
Ooh, I don't know, I think there might be.
Yeah, I think there's a few in Box Elder.
Huh?
Yeah, I think there is a few in Box Elder County.
Are they cannabis or they hemp?
I don't know, it's a fenced, it's a fenced and they got the, I, I, I don't know, I was just wondering, I saw the facility and it looked like.
Most of the facilities I've talked about, if I'm not mistaken, were supposed to be indoor, are they outdoor facilities or the indoor facilities?
Uh, typically for medical grade cannabis, they're gonna be indoor.
But they got, they got the greenhouse deals next to me over there, between Garland and Tremonton, it's on, well, it's just before the crossroads northeast.
They have to control those growth uh things and what, what's affecting their crop and there's also a security issue. Because the medical cannabis, the distinction is hemp is cannabis, medical cannabis, it's all cannabis. Uh, the distinction they make is an amount of THC that's in the product. So if it's point three, or I can't remember if the break is point three and below or below point three percent THC, it qualifies as hemp. Or you could use it for CBD, right? So you'll see some of these guys who grow hemp, hanging that out to dry and then they can process it. And they can gain the CBD, CBD oil out as long as it has a lower concentration of THC in it. Um, if it exceeds that amount, then it qualifies as uh, I'm more of a, what do they call it? Anyway, qualifies as medical cannabis instead of a THC or hemp or CBD or hemp product. Um, but what this has pinned down on these maps is it's taken into consideration all of the state requirements and then added some additional county requirements. What we're trying to do is identify if there's best location properties that would need to be rezoned to allow this type of use. It's more of a production type facility, it's um, it's again, drawing that balance between what's ag and what's manufacturing. Because their main purpose is to produce or to manufacture, have a production type facility. Granted, it is attached to an agricultural type operation. But right now, we're just looking at where's an appropriate place to put the zone or put this use type.
With the idea in mind then that if it's, if it's medical cannabis, probably gonna have to be in the building.
Yeah.
So build a, a building big enough to make that profitable and do it in an ag zone.
And we've done some of the right legwork with that, was that with the commission, Angie?
Yeah, I remember initially we did the overlay.
Yeah, I thought so.
Yeah, and initially we brought overlays in to.
I remember the overlay, I read the overlay discussion, but at, at that point, we were pretty vague on what we were doing and we were trying not to put it.
We went through that process.
Hand zone or anything, we were trying to keep it more.
Yes, it went through the commission first, then it went to the council and the council said, no, let's send it back, we want you to change a couple of things. One being, we're not comfortable with the overlay zone, we want it to be a, a base zone. So we'd add another agriculture zone that's specific to cannabis. And then they also wanted, what was the other piece Angie, I just.
But you wouldn't zone anything that, you would just wait for someone to ask for it to be zoned that.
Well, we had that question for the attorney and his, his thought was based on what the state code requires. If we just wait for someone to come and ask, but then the council has the ability to just say no all the time. So as we have effectively denied them of, of the ability to allow that use to occur. So the consensus was there had to actually be a property that was zoned that, that would indicate that there is a place that it could occur. Or else we're not meeting the requirements of state code. Um, I'll, I'll try and remember the other piece that was tied to this, but um, they wanted to have it come back with a qualification as a zone. Oh, they also wanted to specify where that zone would be, we were putting that off, we were just saying, here's the land use code that accompanies this, um, that would support it. And then we would come back and define what zone would be appropriate, but that was based on the idea that we didn't have to pin it down. And now the, the direction is that we do need to pin it down and identify a new zone and move through that process. So right now, the next step is to identify based on those maps, what are sensible restrictions for that type of use. And I believe this identifies which ones are state restrictions that we already have to follow and then identifies some possible restrictions from the county side. So we looked at things like maybe existing land issues, what, like maybe wetlands or maybe there's steep slopes, those properties weren't qualified. Those properties wouldn't qualify. We still have to meet the FAA requirement for the Farmland Assessment Act, sorry, the Farmland Assessment Act requirements for qualifying as green belt or agriculture. I think that might've been in there. It's been a while since I looked at that code. I should've touched base. But the main thing we were going to do tonight is just look at that map and see if there were restrictions on the county end that, uh, were too much, or if there were additional restrictions that needed to be added. The main reason, uh, I, we, we really raised the question is we've done multiple things to say, well, if it's only this, then there's this many properties that could be rezoned. If we add another restriction, well, that reduced it down to this. And the more restrictions you add, the less, the fewer number of properties could qualify for that use. So that's what you'll find is you click some of those layers off and on, is the number of parcels, potential parcels change.
Did you guys happen to look at anything from Box Elder? I just pulled this up and it is, that one I was describing is in Garland.
Ooh, I can't remember.
And the article on it here, they're even saying, there are also several requirements for location of these growing facilities. They must be more than a thousand feet from a community, but that's probably the state.
It's all state.
Yeah, that overlay zone that we had drafted, the, the, um, Box Elder and.
So we did refer to some of those other cities that have those types of uses in place. Yes.
So with the state being so prohibitive on, or restrictive on it, the overlays that we're looking at on that map, or what are, so what's our, what are we trying to do here? We're trying to narrow it down and distinguish specific areas where we want.
Just prepared in advance, if the state ever did give out more permits, that we would be.
We're prepared.
For them.
Yeah. And that we understand what we're committing to. So we usually tend to look at impacts. What are the real impacts? Do we want these to be on a good road? What type of traffic is this going to produce? What kind of considerations need to be made for this zone that's fairly unique and specific to this type of use? That's some of the things we look at. Uh, we, we, you can, you can push this off. This would be the third push off, so we'd really need to be diligent about making a decision this year.
Could you grab the Box Elder, grab the Box Elder requirements and let's just.
Well, the, the thing with Box Elder also is they have more than one agricultural zone. They have more than one industrial zone. Whereas we don't.
It's not apples to apples anymore.
Okay.
So as a commission, what, do we feel like we want it in an eight, 10 zone out in the middle, or do we want it more in a?
I'm, I'm, I think commercial zone, but.
That's what I'm thinking. I think it's more of a commercial use.
You could call it agricultural commercial. You could come up with any sort of name to identify it, but really where we're at here, and we'll revisit this, I think, next week. It sounds like we should have a refresh, refresher. Um, it's been a while since we've talked about it. It's probably been five to six months.
Yeah.
But if we, Melinda's new also, so I'd like us all on the same page.
If we throw that in a commercial, then, I mean, you've got to have an agriculture aerial area to raise it. It's not going to grow in the asphalt.
No, but they grow it inside the building. It just, it never leaves, none of the product, I mean, it's all in the building. When it leaves, it's sealed up.
I think that one over there is just greenhouses over the actual dirt.
Well, then is it actually cannabis or is it, um, CBD?
It's medical.
If it's medical.
I'll, I'll do a little more research and let you know, but some, I, I think you've got an excellent plan, but with that, would we anticipate then that people would come in with an eight, 10, ask for a rezone to commercial and then do it there?
With a minimum, could we put a minimum on it? I mean, in an industrial zone with a minimum land, minimum footprint?
I think we need to rehash it. I think there's a lot of pieces that we've discussed before that have fallen to memory.
Just for the next meeting, if we can be, I'm just trying not to push it out any too much.
We did have minimum lots.
Just the greenhouses over it.
Overlays.
Yep. These are great questions. It's, it's just been too long since we discussed it. So let's, let's bring that back as a fresh item. Uh, next time we'll go through all the code stuff that you discussed before, where we got to at that point, and that, that will probably help this make a lot more sense.
The feminine law has a greenhouse. Maybe he ought to get in on this.
It's all grown indoors?
A lot of times they use hydponics, so it's all attached to some water in a pipe. Really it's not. Yeah, it's, it's fairly controlled, very controlled.
And the reason why there's only like eight facilities?
Because then they, they control it year round. Weather doesn't affect it.[1685.22]